Okay, let's get started. Now, we're, uh, to start up the meeting, the first item on the agenda is going to be, uh, the audit report, and we're trying out a new system this evening of its board docs. And so our audit reports, along with everything else, are online. So all of us board members, please, uh, get, get ahold of your iPads, look in the library tab, take a look at the, uh, at the board packet for 10, for August 14th, and there should be an audit report. Independent auditors' report.
Mr. Warren?
Yes?
I'm being the part of the board that the board needs.
Oh, great.
Would you have it further down?
Okay. All right. I don't care which way you, uh, you get into it, as long as you get to the document. So you should be looking at a document called Greenberg Central School District Financial Statements and Supplementary Information for June 30th, 2016, correct?
Yeah.
All right? And with that, I'll give you to our external auditor from O'Connor Davies, Scott Oling. Take it away, Scott.
Thank you. Is everybody, okay, is everybody, I don't want to start until everybody has found their...
Okay, when you're, when you're loaded, raise your hand. How about that? So I'm good?
Not yet.
It's loading. It's not coming out. Fraco, I'm not getting anything. I'm just in, it just, I'm, all I'm getting is a loading message, but nothing happening. You got on?
You got on? All right, that's one, two.
You're on? This is all I'm getting. Should be beyond that at this point. Is that the one?
Yes.
Yes. Yeah, 'cause they set it up so they would automatically go on. That's okay, what are we gonna do? Oops. That's a problem. That's all right. I didn't realize it kept off the status.
Antonette's in?
Yep.
Okay. One, two, three. Are you good, Lloyd?
I'm recharged, so.
Okay.
So it's under what?
Here.
It's under what?
Uh, it's both on the agenda and...
Under the meeting, sir?
Should be under the meeting. There should be administrative content under the meeting. Join the meeting?
Here we go. Independent audit.
I see nothing.
It's buffering.
Okay. Okay, the other way is to go in through your packet. Go in through the 10-14 Friday packet if this doesn't work. So that's library.
You move to here?
Yes.
No, if I go home, I go to the Greenberg. If I hit home, I go to the Greenberg webpage.
No, no, not home. Library.
I'm on library.
Yes.
Okay.
And under library, there should be... All right, you can look on with me.
Okay, we'll be fine.
Okay, I think we're good. Go ahead, Scott.
Okay, thank you. So I'm here tonight to present, uh, the results of the annual external audit that my firm performed for the school district for the fiscal year that ended June 30th of 2016. Um, I'm only gonna take you primarily through the general fund, which is your primary operating fund. That's the, uh, the fund that the voters, uh, vote the budget for, uh, each year in the spring, and that's what we will discuss. Um, the only part of this entire report that belongs to us as your audit firm is the auditor's opinion, which appears right after the table of contents at the beginning of the report. And we've issued what's known as a clean opinion or an unmodified opinion on the district's financial statement, meaning that we believe that these financial statements fairly present your financial results of operations for your fiscal year. Now, the district operates a variety of funds. I'm just gonna discuss the general fund because that's your primary fund, but know that, that there's also a, uh, special aid fund to account for federal and state grants that the district receives, a capital projects fund that deals with, you know, capital improvements in the district, a school lunch fund to deal with the lunch program of the district, and a debt service fund that helps service your debt on your outstanding bonded borrowings. The general fund appears on page 56 of the audit report. I know you have to scroll to get there. Um, and it's, it's a summary form of the income statement for the year, and page 57 is a comparative to the numbers from, uh, the prior fiscal year, June of 15. But on page 56, uh, it's presented in a format required by the State Education Department. It's in budget format. You see, it's in five columns. The first column is the original budget. So that is the budget that the voters approved in the spring of 15, 2015, for your operations for the 15-16 year. There's only a small tweak that we have to do to those numbers for any purchase orders that rolled over from the 14-15 year. We have to include those in the original budget column. So $430,000 is added to, to the approved budget in this column that the voters approved and is reflected, uh, in the original budget. So the top part of the page shows the revenue sources to support the budget. And you could see that your total revenues were originally estimated at $63.9 million, primarily from the levy of property taxes of $47 million. And the second number there is other tax items, 9.7. That is primarily of the STAR program. Uh, that's, uh, rather than the homeowners paying that amount, New York State essentially is absorbing that portion of the property tax and pay to you. So between the two, about 50, uh, 56.8 million dollars, uh, for, for the tax levy. And then the other big number in there, of course, is your regular state aid allotment of $4.6 million. It's about 7% of your budget, and that's your regular state aid, your foundation aid, your, uh, excess cost aid, lottery aid, textbook aid, uh, those kinds of things. So you could see 63.9 million total revenues. As you move down that column, now you see what you're spending those resources on. The first group is general support expenses. So those are the administrative type functions of the district, the buildings and grounds type functions. So those were estimated at $8.4 million, mostly in, in the buildings and grounds area, but also money, uh, is spent in this area on, and we'll discuss it in a minute, on tax sursurary, uh, claims. The next group of expenditures is the instructional area, which is really why everybody's here tonight, and that these are really the program costs, the building costs, uh, to operate the educational program. So it's teacher salaries, principal salaries, guidance counselors, pens, pencils, smartboards, uh, you know, any special ed costs. All these things are within the instructional group, and those costs, as you could see, were originally estimated at $32.1 million. Continuing down, pupil transportation, obviously, to operate the school buses, about $5.5 million allotted, uh, for those costs. And then employee benefits, $17.8 million of your budget, about a quarter of your budget, uh, for the benefits that you have to provide employees, either legally or contractually. Contributions to the state pension system, health insurance contributions, FICA contributions, workers' comp, those kinds of things. So your total expenditures, you could see, were estimated at $64 million, operating expenditures. And then a few lines below that, there's something called transfers out. So these are transfers that are moved from this general fund to those funds that I mentioned at the beginning, primarily, in your case, to the special aid fund because certain of these federal and state grants you get, you have to put up a match. Uh, so that's in there. You also transferred money to the capital fund to do some small, uh, capital projects and money to, uh, for debt service, to pay, uh, your principal and interest on your debt service obligations. So when you get down to the bottom of that column, you see a negative $1.4 million. So that means when your budget plan was adopted, you planned to spend a million four more than what you were gonna take in, which generally is not a good thing. But under New York State law, one of the ways that you're allowed to balance your budget is to, what's called appropriate fund balance, or take money from your savings account and use that as a budget balancing tool. So that's why you see the same number as a positive right underneath that, because you did take 1.4 million from fund balance. $430,000 of those encumbrances that I mentioned, uh, and they appear on page 57, and then $1 million that you gave back in property tax relief, uh, to the homeowners and businesses in the school district, because otherwise you would've had to raise property taxes an extra million dollars, or reduce spending a million dollars, or something in between. But that, that, that's how you balanced your spending plan. The second column is the final budget. So as you go through the year, changes are, certain changes are allowed to be made to the budget. And the budget can be modified in one of three ways. You get a revenue source in that you didn't expect, to spend on something you didn't expect. So you could see that the revenue budget was modified from $63.9 million to $64 million, about $100,000, for miscellaneous donations and different things that the district receives, and that you then go spend those funds for that purpose. The second way a budget is, is modified is the most common way, where all you're doing is reallocating resources within the budget. So once the budget's adopted, that's the authorization that the voters have provided in those specific line items. But as you go through the year, your priorities may change, you may need more spending in one area, less in another. So the business office and Mary O'Neill would come to you, seeking your approval, to make what we call budget transfers, moving budget authority from one line to another, but not changing the total budget. And you could see on most of the expenditure lines, you have different numbers from the first column to the second column. And then the third way a budget gets modified is sometimes you have to spend money on something that you didn't budget for, and there is no revenue source, uh, to pay from it. So what you have to do is you have to dig deeper into your pockets and, and take money from fund balance, uh, to spend for those things. So you could see at the bottom of the second column, it's now a $2.2 million shortfall that you're using fund balance for. And that difference between the first and second column is about $825,000. And what you did during the year, again, by board resolution, is that you had to pay tax sursurary claims during the year, and part of your fund balance is set aside for tax sursuraries. So the business office came to you, seeking approval to increase the authorization on the tax sursurary line, so you could pay all the claims that came to the district, uh, this year. But you could see it stays in balance. So the third column is now what actually happened. So the first two are kind of the plans, which are all great, but then the third column is really what actually happened. And so what you could see is your actual revenues came in at $64.2 million. So compared to the revised estimate of revenues of $64 million, you came in $200,000 better than your plan. Again, on $64 million, that's really a negligible amount. It's, it's really, you know, a pretty accurate budget, uh, you know, to, to estimate those revenues. On the expenditure side of the budget, as you go down about two-thirds of the way down the page, you see the total expenditures came in at $62.4 million compared to a budget estimate of $64.9 million. There's $637,000 that's being encumbered, so it's not expensed yet, but it was most likely expensed over the summer as, as certain things, because a lot of the stuff is in the buildings and grounds area. So when you get to the variance column, you see a positive $1.9 million. So that means you underspent the budget by $1.9 million. Again, on a $65 million budget, it's about 3%. So you spent about 97% of the budget. And I will tell you, you know, in a minute, what you did with, with some of those savings. So when you get down to the bottom of, uh, the third column on page 56, you see a positive $533,000. So based on your actual revenues that came in and what you actually spent, which was less than budget, overall, your revenues came in better than your expenditures by $533,000. That $533,000 is added to your fund balance that you started the year, your savings account that you started the year with at $13.2 million. So you end the year, as you could see, with a total fund balance of $13.8 million. If you flip back or scroll back one page, to page 55, page 55 is the balance sheet. So that is, uh, the snapshot of the district at June 30th. It's kind of like a one-day snapshot in time. And in government, or school districts as part of government, uh, these balance sheets are not like a regular businesses' balance sheet. This is a, what we call a modified accrual basis of accounting, so it's just current assets and current liabilities. All of your long-term obligations are, are elsewhere in the report. This is just a current balance sheet. So you could see up top that the district, or towards the bottom, you see that $13.8 million, it's the second number up from the bottom, and fund balance, savings, is basically the difference between your assets and your liabilities. Up top of the page, you have $20.6 million in assets at June 30th, mostly in the form of cash, $16 million of the 20 in the form of cash. So the good news is, you know, that that's, obviously, you're in a highly liquid position for that. Of course, the bad news is, in this interest rate environment, you're earning practically nothing on that $16 million. However, the banks that you have your cash with are required, uh, by New York State law, to provide collateral against your balances for anything over FDIC coverage. So all of this money is collateralized, so it's basically as safe as any money can be in this world, but of course, you're not really earning any monies on it. Yes?
Let me, uh, ask you a question. I think I've talked, I've asked about this before. Uh, under liabilities and fund balance, if you look under fund balance towards the bottom of the page, there's a, there's a label that says non-spendable, and it's $50,000 this year and $175,000 a previous year. What is non-spendable fund balance?
Yes, I was gonna get to that. I'm working, I'm working my way there.
Okay.
I'll be right there. So the assets are 20 million. In the middle of the page, you have liabilities, things that you owe at June 30th, $6.8 million, primarily of which is, primarily of which, is your monies owed to the, uh, the state retirement systems, uh, in particular, the teachers' retirement system. So at the end of each school year, uh, you send up information regarding everybody who's in the teachers' retirement system, what salaries they were paid for the year, and then the district is required to contribute a percentage of those salaries into the retirement system. For this year, the good news that you and everybody else experienced this year was the teachers' retirement system reduced the contribution rate from about 17 and a half percent of payroll to about 13 and a quarter percent of payroll. So that was about a four percentage point drop, but it was about a 20% drop in your costs, which obviously helped everybody out, particularly in this tax cap, uh, environment. So that's why you see the liabilities down from that, from 4.6 to, uh, to $3.5 million this year. So the difference between your assets and liabilities is your fund balance, the $13.8 million. And as you could see, we're required to, uh, display fund balance. It's kind of like a pizza pie, and it has to be sliced up into different slices or different pots of money, because it's not just all, oh, we have $13 million in savings, you know, because you, you don't. So for that, I would take you back a few more pages, because we couldn't fit the detail in on that page, and I take you back to page 47. And on page 47, the first column is this year's general fund, and if you're interested in seeing the prior year's general fund, it's a few more columns over to the right. So in your general fund, of the $13.8 million, the first portion is that $50,000 non-spendable that you're talking about. Those are essentially, uh, what we call advances to the special aid fund. So that fund that I was talking about, that you have to do a certain match on, sometimes what happens is you think your match is a certain amount of money, and that the state is gonna pay a certain amount of money to make 100% for the program. As years go by, uh, sometimes some of these state programs, they don't pay you right away, and what happens sometimes is, is they deny certain expenses, and then ultimately, you end up having to eat more of the difference than, than what you originally thought. So this amount represents potentially some problems with certain receivables that we think are gonna come from the state, but ultimately may not, and that in fact, the general fund at some point in time will have to make up for that difference. So what we've done is we've set aside that portion of fund balance now for that future contingency.
Okay, so have you set a, set aside an amount because you actually found a problem with the state, or is it a reserve?
Some of it just has to do with the fact that some of the receivables that are still on your books in the special aid fund are now several years old. So once they reach a certain age, we like to see that, you know, we're not so sure this money's gonna come in, so let's set it aside until you decide, all right, you know what, we're gonna write that off, and we'll bring the money from the general fund to, to subsidize it.
Okay, so a large, a large balance in that area means we've got a lot of things that have been sitting there for a number of years, but nothing, no money coming into the state.
Correct. So this has been cleaned up, obviously, significantly.
Right, because it got smaller, which is good. Okay.
The bigger portion of your fund balance, so nine and a half million of your 13 million, is in restricted fund balance. So restricted fund balance is restricted either under general municipal law of the state of New York, or the education law of the state of New York. But none of it can happen without board approval. So within the confines that education law or general municipal law have, all of these things have to be set up with, with Board of Education approval at, you know, various times over when these things occur. So as you look at the nine and a half million, the biggest chunk in there is $7.2 million that's been set aside for tax sursurary claims. This district, like many districts, you know, get hit with a lot of tax refund claims from businesses, homeowners, and so you've set up money in a reserve. It's tracked by fiscal year as required under education law, and then as the sursuraries are paid each year, the business office analyzes them, divides them out by year, and figures out which year you still have pots of money remaining in, and then they come to you to take money from this pot to, to help pay those bills. So you've set the money aside for that purpose, and you're using it for that purpose. This money represents about 25% of the exposure that's out there. So in other words, the businesses and, and homeowners who are claiming refunds, you know, claim the moon, and obviously, most of the time, it's settled for, you know, certain percentages on the dollar. This represents about 25% of that exposure, so there's about $28 million of tax sursurary exposure claims that are pending and that are out there. And this, this represents about 25%, which is generally the range where these things end up getting settled at. So you have money for this, and what this does is it allows you not to go out and have to borrow monies to pay sursuraries and incur interest costs. So you're using your own money, uh, to pay for it. So basically, over half of your total fund balance of 13 million is tied up in this pot, cannot be used for any other purpose. Can't be used for operations, salaries, benefits, anything. There's another amount, $589,000, in this employee benefit accrued liability account. That represents the value of any vacation or sick time that's owed to employees at the end of the year. This is what you would have to pay out if everybody left the district at, you know, at one time. There's $1,439,000 in a retirement contribution reserve. Uh, this reserve is established under, uh, general municipal law, so it can only be used towards your employee retirement system pension bill, not your teachers' retirement system bill. So you've set aside $1,439,000 in this reserve to be used, uh, against future retirement bills. And then a few smaller amounts. So that's the nine and a half million dollars in restricted. The next group is the assigned fund balance, and there's really two pieces to the assigned fund balance. It's those encumbrances, those purchase orders that were open at the end of the year, $637,000. That will amend the budget that you're in now, so you have the authority to pay those purchase orders. And then, uh, just like last year, you use $1 million again to balance your 16-17 budget. So again, if you look at your 16-17 budget, your spending plan is a million dollars more than your revenues to support that. So because you have a savings account, you said, I'm gonna give back a million dollars, uh, so otherwise, I would've had to raise property taxes another million, or cut expenses a million dollars, or something in between. So that's what that is. So that's $1,439,000 of your 13 million fund balance. So when you back all those pieces out, what you're left with really in your $13 million fund balance that we call the free and clear fund balance, or the unassigned or unencumbered, is $2.6 million. Uh, that amount represents 4% of your adopted budget for 16-17, of about $65 million. Uh, that is the maximum amount you're allowed to have under, uh, New York State law. So that's where your finances kind of stand for the 15-16 fiscal year. I'd be glad to take any comments or questions that anyone has.
Other questions from the board? Well, we've gone over this thing once before in the audit committee, so hearing no questions, thank you, Mr. Oling.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
It is anticipated that the board will go into executive session to discuss employment history of particular persons being considered for board action this evening. Do I hear a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? We're in closed session. See in about an hour. Will you all please rise for the pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody. We now, thank you for your patience. We now come to the portion of the meeting in which we allow for public input. Uh, there is a notice which says, please, you know, when you speak about an issue, don't use any names, uh, speak civilly and carefully, and we'll go over that more if we need to. But our first speaker is Chris Valen.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Um, I'd like to direct the board to agenda item, let's see, finance, no, business agenda item four. It's regarding the contract with D'Arcangelo and Company about an agreed-upon procedures engagement for extra classroom activities fund. Can you elaborate a little bit on what that is?
Go ahead.
Mary, are you comfortable?
Hi. Um, each year, the, the district is required to have an annual risk assessment done annually. In addition to that, the audit committee selects an area of focus that our internal controls auditor reviews. Uh, this year, the audit committee chose to have them, to have them review the extra classroom activities.
What are those? And when you say extra classroom activities, can you be specific as to what that is?
It's, it would be all the clubs. It would be the, the clubs, like the, um, the freshman class, uh, if you have a ski club, I'm just naming off clubs. Key Club. It would be looking at their finances and how they operate.
So the active, the extra classroom activities do not include things like field trips or speakers that come into the building? It's really the after-school clubs?
Yeah, it's the actual clubs.
Okay. Okay. And then just a few other things on the budget code transfers. We're transferring money to pay for the IB contract. Is that covering all schools or just a few of them?
That's all schools.
Okay. And on the agenda, we're approving the after-school programs at, uh, the personnel at Jackson, Highview, and Bailey, and a few at the high, middle high school. Are those after-school programs in the elementary grades, specifically Jackson and Highview, are those clubs now, like chorus, dance, cooking, or are they including AIS programs?
These are basically extracurricular after-school. They're not AIS. AIS is embedded during the day, where it is best taught, as research tells us.
Okay. And then just going back to my initial question about the extra classroom activities funds, would it be with, could it, could it be added into the umbrella that this, um, procedure audit is gonna cover, um, those after, those extra classroom activities such as field trips and, no, check it out now. Okay, then I'm gonna ask...
Right now, it is specific. What the, what the boards had, uh, asked the auditors to do is specific for the student activities.
Okay. Then could someone just explain to me? Okay. And on the agenda, we're approving the after-school programs at, the personnel at Jackson, Highview, and Bailey, and a few at the middle high school. Are those after-school programs in the elementary grades, specifically Jackson and Highview, are those clubs now, like chorus, dance, cooking, or are they including AIS programs?
These are basically extracurricular after-school, they're not AIS. AIS is embedded during the day where it is best taught, as research tells us.
Okay. And then, just going back to my initial question about the extra classroom activities funds, would it be with, could it be added into the umbrella that this procedure audit is going to cover those after, those extra classroom activities such as field trips and, no, check it out now. Okay, then I'm going to ask--
You can ask, go.
Right now, it is specific, what the boards had asked the auditors to do is specific for the student activities.
Okay. Then could someone just explain to me very briefly what our transportation contract looks like as far as buses for trips, or sports, or bands, and how those funds are appropriated to each school or activity?
Student activities.
Well, the funds are in, again, the, excuse me? Oh, okay. The funds are budgeted for, with the help of the building, with the help of the building principals. During the budget process, they let us know what kind of trips they want to take. We turn around and we estimate what we need, we look back at what the district has spent in the past. But there'd be a difference between a field trip that your child would go on, say, for a science class versus a trip that you might go on for key club. There are two separate types of trips. So the key club, the student activities would pay for. The, let's say, a science class trip, the district would pay for.
So for band, for example, does band fall under a club or class, since it is offered during the curricular day?
I believe that there's both a, there's a band class, and I believe there's also a band club.
It depends on which grade level are you referencing. Are you talking about just elementary?
At the moment, yes, but I'm curious about the whole district.
So we have, we have an after-school program, and then we also have clubs. So at the secondary level, it would be more of a club, but there are, I believe we have it at Bailey, and I believe we have it at, I want to say, I think there's one in Highview too, Mary, if I'm not mistaken. I, don't quote me, I don't know, but I do know that there is a, an after-school activity for band at Bailey Elementary School.
At Bailey, yes, there's a band after-school, but it's also covered during the curricular day, there's band class.
Yes, we do. We have band classes during the day.
Okay. Okay, so, so for example, when the band from Bailey goes on a trip to compete in a compet, in a, I forget the name of the competition for bands, but to compete, is that a class trip that the district pays for, or is it a club trip that the band members pay for?
Is that a class?
Or is that something we need to look into?
Well, that would, because the entire class probably would not go, but you know what, before I answer that question definitively, let me find out for you, and then let me get back to you.
Because it might fall under the remit of this--
Right, so let me find out, and then let me get back to you.
Okay. And then, sorry, going back to the field trips. If the, I understand the building leaders during budget time put in an estimate of their needs for the upcoming year, but it seems to me that when, historically, my children are now in, the oldest one's in sixth grade, so I'm only talking elementary experience here. At various schools, sometimes the bus portion of the trip is paid for by the district or the school, it's within their budget, and the function itself might be paid for with fundraising by the PTA or the parents themselves. And as I've moved up in grades, that seems to change with each building or year as far as who's covering the bus for the trips. So I'm just confused as to what the protocol is for buses for field trips. No? Okay.
Is that what she was referring to?
There are classroom activity funds at the upper grades, so you reach the point, by the time you're in high school, there's like a classroom activity fund for freshmen, sophomores, junior seniors, and there's also a classroom activity fund for the middle school. Earlier grades, it may be handled differently. So it changes as you move through.
Okay, I'll take the conversation offline later. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Rita Jones.
Mr. Warner, you mentioned, I'm glad you mentioned it again, because I was going to bring it up, the statement you have in the beginning of the board agenda. I noticed within the last, I believe it's two years, you've been emphasizing that. Has something happened while we have to be told that traditionally, boards are not, don't have to let people speak at the board meetings? Is there a reason why we have to go through this all the time at every board meeting?
There was a resolution passed by the board stating that we needed to deal with this.
My question to you is--
And I voted against that resolution, but that's the will of the board.
Okay, did something happen to cause the board to be so vehement about it? Why is it that, within the last two years, we're listening to this? I mean, we all know the rules, I think we've all been around here long enough to know that the public don't have to speak at board meetings, but I think the majority of districts allow people to come and speak. So, I mean, you're emphasizing it more and more lately, I mean, is there a problem someplace?
Not so far.
Okay. My other question was the same question that was asked before, item four. But you answered a question. I just wanted to say, there were two teachers that died recently, and I know none of you on the board probably knew them, except Mr. Newland would know Susan Golden, a great math teacher at Woodlands High School. She was just one of the great teachers of math at the high school. And then Toni Abramson Matthews, she was Toni Abramson when she was here. And I will tell you, she was a fierce field hockey teacher. In fact, many of the students that were here at Woodlands got scholarships to Yale and Harvard and stuff because of their field hockey experiences. She was great. So I just wanted to bring it to your attention, because I don't think anyone here was around when they were here, but they were great teachers at Woodlands. My other thing was, I just wanted to thank Ms. Simone publicly for nominating me for the Nettie Jackson Award, and I just want to say to her, I'm glad that she keeps the memory of Nettie and Lee alive, because Lee was a very progressive person, and he was going forward in a great way. And Nettie, of course, everyone knows that she loved all children in the district, and she did what she could for all the children. She also loved the staff, because as a civil service, head of the Civil Service Union, she fought for the grown-ups also. So I just want to thank Ms. Simone publicly for always keeping the memories alive. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, the next item on our agenda is policy presentation. We have one policy amendment be considered for board adoption at the November 15, 2016 meeting concerning the organization chart. We updated the organization chart. Copies of this policy are available here tonight and in the district clerk's office. They will also be available in all the school buildings and on our website. All comments concerning this policy should be submitted in writing to the Board of Education. We'll move on now to reports to the board. And for our first report is the Lee F. Jackson School presentation.
Should we start singing?
Yes, sing away.
All right. You know, with Lee F. Jackson, we always have to sing, right, Judy? That's our, we always start our meetings with a song, but anyhow, good evening and welcome. President Warner, Vice President Glazer, our superintendent, Dr. Chase, thank you so much for having us this evening, board trustees and central office administrators. We are always so honored when we are able to present the wonderful things that happen here at the Lee F. Jackson School. Our staff goes above and beyond for our children. Our children are amazing. I want to thank the teachers that came out and the parents to support the Lee F. Jackson School tonight for our presentation. And I want to introduce with, I have my colleagues and my wonderful teachers here. I have Mr. Wooton, who's a kindergarten teacher. I have Ms. Lamana, also a kindergarten teacher, Ms. Cujos, who's a first-grade teacher, and I have Ms. Parker, who is a first-grade teacher. So tonight, we're going to just touch on a few things that are happening at the Lee F. Jackson School, and, okay, I have the clicker. Great. Okay. Does it work? Or is it too far? All right, so, how is the Lee F. Jackson School supporting the Greenberg Goals and Strategic Plan? So right, tonight, we're only going to hit on three of the areas. There are PLCs, our extended school year, sorry, extended school day, the district initiatives, which is foundations, and the UDL, Universal Design for Learning. So those are the three areas that we're going to be just touching upon this evening. So I'm going to introduce with this portion, I have Mr. Wooton, who's going to talk about the PLCs, and he is one of our PLC leaders.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, our superintendent, our administration, and members of the Board of Education. Our team meetings focus on student performance and teaching strategies. Our goal has always been to meet the needs of every single kid in our school. So the kindergarten team and the first-grade team, we meet about one to two times per week. We have vertical articulations throughout the school year to make sure everybody's on the same page, of course, and to meet the needs of every child, we must reflect upon these four essential questions right here. Question number one is, what do we do, what do we need to our students to learn? That's our curriculum, our foundations, our ELA domains, math modules, Science 21, trades writing, STEAM centers, and our International Baccalaureate Program. Essential question number two is how will we know when they have learned it? And that is our, what we do is we provide common formative assessments to monitor our students' progress. Our teams have developed a common understanding about what characterizes student performance that is proficient and student performance that do not meet our expectations. And from there, we go on to essential question number three, what will we do when they haven't learned or are underperforming? Now, during our team meetings, we analyze our data and identify students who are in need of extra support. If we determine a student is having difficulty with learning, there is a school-wide systematic response to provide support to the student and to the teacher. Interventions are matched to meet the individual needs of students, and those interventions are monitored, they're evaluated, they're modified, and in some cases, they're discontinued. The last essential question discussed during our team meetings is what will we do when they already know it or they need enrichment? Now, we provide our students with a rigorous and challenging academic program, as you all know, and advanced instruction and materials are provided for students who are outperforming expectations. That, in essence, is what we do during our PLC meetings, and that's the framework and what we really do during our PLC time. Thank you all for your time, and now I'd like to bring up my colleague Toni Lamana to speak about our extended day schedule.
One question.
Yes, sir.
Can you give me an example of a form of enrichment? Is it a piece of material or something, just an example?
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. We have children coming into kindergarten who are readers right now. So what we do is we, through vertical articulation, we might get a first-grade teacher, we might have them go in with a first-grade teacher during their reading block, maybe that one child will need a little bit more enrichment with the first-grade teacher. Instead of being, you know, at a readiness level right now, we put them with children who are already reading.
Very good. Yes, Ms. Simone?
I just want to add that later on, when Ms. Parker presents, she's going to talk about the Daily Three and the Daily Five, and that's where choice and differentiation will take place. So that's where we'll provide enrichment for the students as well. And also, our librarian will provide enrichment with projects, which is aligned to the International Baccalaureate Program. So throughout the day, there is opportunities for enrichment.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hello, everyone. I'll be talking about extended day. So last year, we started at eight, sorry, at nine o'clock. This year, we're starting at 8:40, and that extra time allows us to settle in before we begin foundations at nine o'clock, which is our school-wide, from nine to 9:30 is our school-wide foundations period. And now that we have nine periods in the school day, we are able to have a reading and math block rather than just one period throughout the day, so it allows more time for us to engage in reading and math. We also have an AIS period, which is built-in daily to support all learners, not just struggling learners. We, like Joe said, it helps enrich the students also, so it really meets the needs of all students. We are also able to implement STEAM centers daily, which is essential for young learners. It's wonderful. And lunch is now broken up into four periods, which allows for more supervision, more recess time, and less injury, which is a wonderful, wonderful thing. And now Maria Cujos will let you, will tell you about UDL.
Good evening. Universal Design for Learning. UDL is a set of principles of curriculum development that give all individuals equal opportunities to learn. It's not just a single, one-size-fits-all solution, but rather flexible approaches that can be customized and adjusted for individual needs. There are three principles. Provide multiple means of representation, which is the what of learning. Provide multiple means of action and expression, the how of learning. And provide multiple means of engagement, the why of learning. How is Lee F. Jackson implementing UDL? So what is our action plan? What is our goal? What do we hope to accomplish here? How can we provide multiple means of engagement and ensure that we are providing options throughout our ELA and our math domains? These are some ways. Implementing UDL through Daily Three ELA and Daily Three Math. Daily Three Math, Daily Five, and UDL all complement each other very well. Promotes collaboration and community among students, which is guided principle of UDL. The students here are given opportunities to work with partners, they are given choice and differentiation. So with that said, Tara Parker is going to talk about Daily Three and Daily Five.
Good evening. So here at Lee F. Jackson, we are implementing UDL through Daily Five and the math Daily Three. So to kind of explain what the Daily Five is, so as you can see on the board, this is a display that we all have in our classrooms. The Daily Five is a framework for structuring literacy time so that students develop lifelong habits of reading, writing, and working independently. Students select from five different authentic reading and writing choices. While the students are picking one of the choices, the teacher is meeting the individual needs of the students through whole-group or small-group instruction. The five choices of Daily Five are read to self, read to someone, work on writing, listen to reading, or word work. Math Daily Three, this is the chart for Math Daily Three that we also have in all of our classrooms here at Lee F. Jackson. For Math Daily Three, it is a framework for struggling math time, excuse me, for structuring math time, so students develop a deep conceptual understanding and mathematical proficiency. So students are selecting one of these three choices, and they're working independently. While the students are working on one of these choices, the teacher is meeting the individual needs of the students through small-group or whole-group instruction. The three choices for Math Daily Three are math by myself, math writing, and math with someone. So now we have a video that we're going to show where you're going to be able to see the Math Daily Three and the Daily Five in action. Will it be easier if we turn the light on? That light over there?
Math Daily Three is a framework for structuring math time so students develop deep conceptual understanding and mathematical proficiency. Students come in, sit on their assigned spots on the carpet, waiting for the mini-lesson to be delivered. The learning target is posted on the board. The target is, I can find and name three-dimensional shapes, including cone and rectangular prism. After the lesson, the students select from these three choices. Math by myself, math writing, and math with someone. Before we begin, a timer is set for 15 minutes.
And Daily Three. Timer is on.
One choice was math with someone. Students worked with a partner in this group on a math board game. The game was five in a row, where students added two numbers together. Another choice was math writing. Students worked in their math-- Students worked in their math journals and wrote in their own words what they learned during today's lesson. Students used a prompt, "Today in math, I learned." In the choice Math with Someone, students work on the concept that was taught.
What objects are being in that classroom? How many flat surfaces?
Three.
Let's count.
One, two, three, four, five, six.
As you could see, all the students are working in one of the three choices, and they're all working productively. Once the timer goes off, children clean up their materials and transition into their next choice.
On your mark. Get set. Ready? Daily Three.
The Daily Five is a framework for structuring literacy time so students develop lifelong habits of reading, writing, and working independently. Students select from five authentic reading and writing choices, working independently towards their own goals, while the teacher meets with individual needs through whole group and small group instruction, as well as one-to-one conferring. These choices include read to self, work on writing, read to someone, listen to reading, and word work. Before we break into our Daily Five choices, students discuss or review their goals for the day.
All right, Daily Five, Center One. Amy, go press start for me, please.
The timer is set for 15 minutes. During Read to Self, students grab their book boxes and choose a book to read that's on their independent level. In each student's book box is about eight Just Write books. During this choice, students are working on reading skills, like story retelling. In the choice Word Work, students are working on different spelling features. They are given a word-choice menu, and on the back, they can find their list of words. Students are able to choose one activity per day. When they are done with the activity, they cross it off and choose a different one the next day. During the Listening Center choice, students are listening to a story, then they read the story, and then they answer questions about the story. The stories in the Listening Center are based on the individual child's reading level. In the Work on Writing choice, students are working on writing. Students are given the choice to write about a topic, pick a writing prompt, or write a sticker story. Each student is given an individual journal where they write their stories. They are also given a vocabulary list and a word wall so they can spell words correctly. While the students are working on one of the Daily Five choices, I, the teacher, am working with a small group. During this small group, I am teaching guided reading. As you can see, all of the students are working in a Daily Five choice. When the timer goes off, the students clean up and rotate to their next choice.
So, this was our presentation, and if you could see the framework, the principles of UDL, you're looking at the how, the why, you know, the what, and it's all tied into the Daily Three and the Daily Five. And what we're doing is, we're making them independent, we're making them enquirers, we're really preparing them to be lifelong learners. So, thank you for having us. Do you have any questions?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Warner.
How do you tell, but first, good job, this is very heartwarming, and I love the fact that you've got word work in there, that's the piece that always falls by the way, it's there. So, you're supporting the students in all the ways that I know of that I think are important with the experience I've had.
Thank you.
How do you tell what a Just Write book is?
Okay.
And then, how does that change over the course of the year?
So, in the beginning of the school year, the teachers assess the students, and they pretty much know, you know, what their reading abilities are. So, then, what they do is, the children could select their own books, and then they ask them, is it, are you able to have less than two mistakes on the page? There's a series of questions that the children ask themselves, and they could self-assess if that's right for their reading ability. So, I know that Mr. Wooten, he does the five-finger rule. Can you just tell me what those five-finger rule is?
Go for it.
To test comprehension, we do the five-finger story retell, the characters, setting, the beginning, the middle, and the end. If they're able to give me all five fingers, that means they understood the story. Okay? They understood, they have the comprehension there, and it really gets into a lot of, you know, I give them a high five, if they get it all right, you know, I really, really soup it up a little bit. So, you know, that's one way to assess reading comprehension. We have all different strategies to assess. We also do developmental reading assessments throughout the entire year to assess where they're at and where their ability is. So, if a child is reading on Level Four, we'll give them maybe Level Three, Level Four, Level Five books to see.
And see what they gravitate to. Okay. And that was my other question, how do you make sure it's not too easy? You've got questions to say it's not too hard.
We always want something.
You make sure they challenge themselves a little bit.
Right. We always want something that maybe might be a little bit too easy for them, to give them their self-confidence, oh, I could read this, I'm going to move on to the next level. Okay? So, we always want to give them books, maybe a little bit easy, maybe right on their level, maybe a little bit difficult. We also send, well, in my program, we send these books home to the parents as well, so they're reading these books at home and in school. Different books, of course, but same levels.
Very good. Other questions?
And we want to encourage them to be, have a love for reading. So, sometimes, an easy book, it's because they love that book and they keep reading it over and over, and they might select that book to read to someone else as well. So.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. And I would like to thank Mr. Parker, he took the time to come in and video the two classrooms, so thank you, Mr. Parker.
Ms. Simone, I'm sorry, I have a question.
Sure.
Good question. Answer that.
Thank you. I know you touched on some of the assessments, and I know it's pretty early in the year. With both, or with the programs that you have presented to us, what are some of the challenges that students are going through, and how are you guys addressing those challenges?
At this point in the school year, you know, the students coming in from kindergarten, we are looking at their letters and sounds and identifying. Sometimes, a student, we'll assess a student, and they might be able to read a book because they've memorized words, but through our Foundations program, they have unit assessment, so we could really target in to see which students know their letters and know the sounds of the letters. So, they may look at a word and memorize the word, but then, when you ask them to break it down, that's where they may struggle. So, I know that, we just had this conversation with the kindergarten teachers today. The first unit assessment in Foundations, they fly through it, but now, as the program, now as we're teaching it, there's struggles. So, it's the 80% rule, they have to pass by 80%, and you have to have 80% of the students in the class passing before you can move on. And what's great about having our nine-period day is now we have the AIS period built-in. So, for kindergarten, Ms. Matrenko and some of the TAs are working with the students, building on that. In first grade, we have Ms. DeAndrea and some of our TAs working on, you know, some of those strategies. As the students go into the school year, we're constantly assessing, I mean, every guided reading lesson is an assessment. So, that's where you'll be changing the levels of the books, documenting where they need improvement, so the next guided reading lesson, the teacher might see that maybe comparing contrast, or if it's rhyming, or if it's colored words, and they document it. They have a form, they're recording, and that's how, you know, we assess the students.
Thank you.
Okay. We're good?
Any other questions or comments from the board? Go ahead, Dr. Chase.
First and foremost, I just would like to thank Ms. Simone and her fabulous staff for this wonderful presentation, and it's only a vignette of what goes on at Lee of Jackson Elementary School. I know for a fact Ms. Simone wanted to share a lot more, but I told her we were limited with time, and she just pulled out three really important points. The teachers who presented tonight, I will share with you, community, and for those teachers who are here in support as well, they didn't fudge this at all. When you go into Lee of Jackson, learning takes place. You see it, children at that age are not acting at all. This is what you see. The first day of school, when I walked through the buildings, the kids were engaged in learning, day one. From the moment the kids come into the building to the end of the day, right before they get on the bus, the kids are engaged in active learning. So, it's really refreshing to hear a principal articulate programs and to speak intimately about what's going on, and so I applaud you for that, Mrs. Simone.
Thank you.
And what we see, what we witnessed here, and what we hear from your teachers is truly a testament to your leadership, so I thank you again. I thank the teachers for a job well done. And Mr. Parker, that was an awesome video, that was well done. Congratulations to you. So, thank you all.
Thank you very much.
The next item on our agenda is the superintendent's report.
Good evening, once again. I do want to just make, I want to use this opportunity to speak to the community, just to give you all some updates. And again, we welcome our teachers who are here. Thank you all for being here this evening, and I'm glad you are here, because I do want to remind you all that Friday is our Think Pink Day. It's a lighter shade than what you're wearing right now, just a little bit lighter, but it's our way of acknowledging and also engage in activities and bringing an awareness to not only breast cancer, but to all cancers. As you know, it is Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and many schools are doing different activities to raise money in support of cancer research. And so, not only teachers are we going to be adorned in our pink, but also our students. And we ask our parents who come into our schools to also, please show your support by wearing pink, board members too, who come into the school. Please wear pink in support of Think Pink Day for Friday. We'll be around the buildings, we'll be taking pictures also, but more importantly, for the cause. I do want to also remind the community that about a week or so ago, you received a letter from me with regard to the clown sighting situation that's been going on nationwide. In the letter, I also indicated that we know that Halloween is upon us, and, you know, children love to wear various costumes. However, in this school district, clown masks or any costumes that resemble a clown is prohibited. So, no one can wear clown masks nor clown costumes in our school district for Halloween, and so we definitely want to adhere to that particular mandate. I also would like to encourage the community to continue to support our social media. We're almost at 600 likes on Facebook. I really would like to have much more than that, but please continue to support. And if you have not subscribed to our mobile app, I kindly ask that you please subscribe to our mobile app so that you can get notifications immediately, real-time notifications, but please continue to support our Facebook page as well as Twitter, and yes, we are now on Instagram. I'm going to ask our Director of STEAM, Mr. Todd Minch, if you could just grab that microphone, because part of my presentation is, I'd like for Todd to share some upcoming events as it relates to STEAM. We are moving full STEAM ahead in our school district, and I'm very happy that we have taken on this initiative, because we have some really awesome things coming down the pipe for our students. And Todd, I just want to first congratulate you for getting into the schools, going into the classrooms, finding out what it is that our teachers need, finding out what it is that our children need to be true global learners. So, that being said, can you just talk about, first, the upcoming STEAM Career Fair that will take place at Bailey Elementary School?
Sure, sure. I definitely thank, I thank you and the board for the time. Next Friday, the 28th, right before the Wellness Fair, Resource Fair, I'm sorry, the PTA is putting on Saturday, we will have our first, what we hope to be many, STEAM Career Fairs. So, the fourth through sixth graders at Roy J. Bailey will have about a dozen to 15 local community members, corporations, industry, from the Tappan Zee Bridge folks to a retired pharmacist in the area that heard about it, that called called me to be involved in it. We have some of our high school educators, one of our physics teachers who's also an engineer, to set up booths and tables that students could go around to kind of self-select jobs that interest them, jobs they did not know about, and how STEAM relates to those jobs. So, I had very minimal directions for the participants. I said, be prepared for questions, and be prepared to be able to articulate how STEAM is used in your profession. So, we definitely look forward to that. That'll be 8:30 to 11:00 a.m. I invite folks to stop by, and the Board of Education will receive a formal invitation to that in their upcoming packet that's going to you. So, that's our first event, or one of our first events. Our first event just concluded, the Logo Challenge. We had a winner, a sixth-grade student, Sophia Zamudio, from Roy J. Bailey School, again, a sixth grader, and we will fetch her at an upcoming board meeting. So, we'll introduce her, and she and her parents will be here to get our support. And in front of Mr. Warner, he doesn't know who put those there, but that was me. That is some accoutrements that were created by a 3D pen, a couple of which we have in the district, so a mini 3D printer. That's the talent-less person that you're looking at at the microphone right now, creating those. That's a 3DG for Greenberg. I have a pair of glasses that I will agree, or will admit, I had to take a template to do. And then, we have par for the season, a Halloween jack-o'-lantern. So, that is the, was the winning gift, I guess you would say, to our STEAM Logo Challenge. So, please, pass those around for the board to see. Seventh and eighth-grade students will be creating a bridge with the 3D printer, 3D pen, so that's something to look forward to in an upcoming classroom.
Mr. Minch, I know you've mentioned the logo contest, and I wasn't going to mention it because the young lady isn't here, we're going to really celebrate her next month, but being that you mentioned it, can you just show the community the actual logo design? That was the winning design, please? Would you like to wear these?
Not tonight. Careful of the glitter, most of it's in the backseat of my car right now, but a little bit still resides on the poster. I had to, because I didn't want to leave the 3D printer items up there without a little bit of an explanation. We had 150 or so applicants or students, and all of the buildings were represented, so it was very, very nice. We'll talk a lot more about that at our next meeting.
And so, you are a very busy man, but I would like to share with the community some partnerships that we will engage, such as Curious on the Hudson, as well as a new partnership with White Plains Hospital. So, if you could just give us a little bit of an overview as to what we'll be doing with those two organizations, that'd be great.
Sure. Let's start with the White Plains Hospital. I just met with a representative today, and they're resurrecting a couple of programs that they started in the late '80s. One of them is a clinical tutorial for high school students, so it's a semester-based program. There can be up to a dozen students, and they will run through a series of experiences on a Thursday evening, things like pulmonary and thoracic and cardiology, and each of the weeks will have a different theme, and they will meet with a medical doctor and involve themselves with some lectures, some hands-on activities, and grab a light dinner as well. And another component is, and this sounds extremely interesting, I think I'm in too, robotic surgery high school career exposure. So, this is a two-day opportunity for a small group of students. So this is a two-day opportunity for a small group of students to, again, go to White Plains Hospital and actually use a robot and be able to utilize it in a, you know, kind of quasi-surgery experience. Sounds very interesting. They run those very often, starting probably in November or December. So I wanted to speak a little bit about how we're going to try to have students involve themselves in these unique programs. Instead of putting posters up or, you know, just throwing it on our webpage, which are all obviously good ways, I have a meeting with Mr. Smith coming up, and I'm shaking my head at him because we're trying to set a date where we're going to sit down with the guidance department at the high school and start to identify students that have shown an interest through counseling sessions, through just self-assessment for careers in these fields. And really go to those students like we've done before and have a conversation with them and explain to them on one-on-one or in a small group setting, how unique and extraordinary these opportunities are, and if there's any way that they can participate, that they should. So give them more than just a passing, hey, if you're interested, go ahead. There's so much out there, so much they're bombarded with at this age, and so many things that they have to worry about. I think a personal touch hopefully will go a long way here. So that's our plan, and we're going to map out the way to go and do that in the very, very near future. And then lastly, the Curious on the Hudson folks, a local organization who hopped on board as STEAM has come and really is a valuable resource to the community. I was literally across the county over in Dobbs Ferry before this meeting tonight, meeting with about 20 or 25 STEAM professionals in the area. And the Curious folks hosted this as a STEAM meetup. So we exchanged business cards and ideas, and we're going to meet regularly to talk about things that are going on in the Scarsdells of the world and the art centers of the, and I don't want to say world, I want to say in our local community, and share from each other, compare stories, what works, what doesn't work. Makerspace was a big topic tonight. That's a very hot topic. And I'll report here, what is the phenomenon of Makerspaces. School districts are funding them and setting them up, and then we are looking at each other and not knowing what to do with them. So that was a conversation tonight. And I'm talking about the school districts that I just referenced that have, you know, maybe some more resources than other school districts, and they're still not utilizing them. So they have spaces that are brand-new state-of-the-art, and no one's filtering through them. So just trying to find a plan, plan of attack, a plan to make sure that the great ideas wind up in the hands of students, which is where they should be.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, absolutely. And as you can see, we are moving full STEAM ahead. And so I thank you for that. And, I mean, we're only in October, and we have a pretty robust plan with our STEAM initiatives. And so again, Mr. Minch, I thank you for hitting the ground running, for embracing this challenge. And I look forward to more wonderful things coming down the pike. Last, but definitely not least, I invite each and every one of you to join me at the upcoming Resource Fair. Our PTA will be hosting the Resource Fair at RJ Bailey Elementary School. This fair will take place from 9:00 until 2:00 o'clock. On Saturday, October 22nd, that is, okay, October 22nd. So please come, one all. It's for everyone. It's for all of our students. It's an opportunity to meet with organizations and to meet with individuals who could possibly bring more enrichment to our children. It's also a great time to talk to other parents, like-minded parents, and to network, and our children have an opportunity to have their face painted and get engaged in all sorts of activities. And so please join us on, say it again. 29th. So on the 29th, I apologize, Saturday, the 29th, I'm thinking this Saturday, I apologize. The 29th of October, from 9:00 until 2:00. And that is it. Sorry, one more thing. I do want to remind our parents that October 26th is a two-hour early dismissal. Please plan childcare accordingly. Thank you all, and have a great night.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is the report of the Assistant Superintendent for Business. Take it away, Mary.
Good evening. I wanted to give the board and the community a quick update on the lead testing requirement that the governor signed into law. A few weeks ago, they signed into law that we must test for lead all of our water sources, which, when we found that out, we were in pretty good shape because we had already tested our drinking water. We'd already tested our water fountains and had remediated any issues that we had with those back in the spring. So when this came out, what we had to do was test our non-drinkable water, which is, in essence, is our bathroom sinks. We were due to have the testing done for the elementary levels by September 30th. The process was completed, and we actually received the results. Out of 100 samples, five showed levels that exceeded the standard. As required, we'll be posting signs that the water is not for drinking and it's for hand washing only. In addition, we'll be taking an added measure by replacing all the faucets in the five sinks. Dr. Chase, I know, has sent home a letter to the parents, to the community this afternoon. So they will have all that information. The school serving grades 6 through 12, we have to have this testing completed by October 31st. We have completed the testing, and we're awaiting the results. As required, we'll be posting all lead testing and remediation plans on our website, and we'll be reporting it to any of the required agencies. At the last meeting, the board approved the replacement of the burglar alarms in the district. As you may recall, this is at no cost to the community, and it results in a slightly lower ongoing maintenance costs. As of today, alarm specialist, the vendor that was appointed, has completed the installation of the equipment at ECP, and they're currently working on the mansion and the high school. I also wanted to provide you with an update on the fire alarms. As you know, we talked previously about the aging fire alarm system in the high school and how our recent building condition survey rated it unsatisfactory. I wanted to thank the board for approving an emergency resolution at the last, at your last workshop for this to be replaced. We've received three quotes from vendors, and we're currently working on further reducing the cost by negotiating with the vendors. I anticipate having a final cost for you shortly. And finally, I have to acknowledge our audit. As you know, this is the last of our audits. We've had finalized. We have multiple ones this year. So I had to take a moment to thank all the faculty, staff, the administrators, the buildings, the building principals. They were wonderful with responding to our requests, giving us the information that we needed to meet our deadlines. I do have to acknowledge, though, the staff in the business office. Without the staff there and the hard work and the dedication, the attention to detail, you wouldn't have the audit that you had that was presented by the auditors today. They work really hard, and through the multiple, the several audits that we've had, they managed to still pay people. They managed to still, people still got paychecks. They managed to pay the bills. They managed to provide health insurance. They managed to purchase the things that the staff needed. So I wanted to personally thank the business office. I think they've done a great job.
Phenomenal job.
Phenomenal. Thank you.
Thank you. And now we move on to committee reports. Do we have any reports tonight? Lloyd?
The audit report. The audit committee meet on Wednesday, October 13th to review the 215 to 16 annual audit presented by Scott Allen of O'Connor and Davis. Revenues came in on budget. Budget was modified due to the board approval of donations. Expenses increased in instructional area by approximately 5%. Increase in expenses were based on student needs. Employees' benefit decreased due to retirement contribution rate. The district was very low debt. The district maintained 4% fund balance. The majority of our fund balance is restricted. We are good, we are in good financial shape. And again, thanks to Mary and her staff for a fantastic job there. The audit comment and recommendations are extract classroom activity. We recognized earlier that there were going to be some recommendation, and during our last audit committee, we directed Dark Angelo to further review extra-classroom activities, assist us with all audit finding. The committee meeting ended at 6:30 p.m. The next audit committee meeting will be scheduled with Dark Angelo complete the annual risk assessment and student activity review. The Health and Wellness Committee will be reaching out to administration, faculty, staff, and parents to determine interest in the committee and set the first meeting of the year. That's the end of my report.
Thank you. Other reports? Eric?
Hi, good evening. Okay, just a couple of words. The Technology Committee met, and we are continuing our final preparations to present the three-year technology plan to Dr. Chase and to the board. I want to thank those teachers and educators and members of the community who came out to help us at this last meeting and to announce that the Technology Committee is meeting again tomorrow afternoon at the mansion at 2:30. So again, this is an amazing opportunity to get involved in your district and to find out about the great technologies that are being offered to our students and our professionals. Thank you.
Other reports?
I have one. The Community Engagement Committee. The Community Engagement Committee met last night, 10:17:16 at Highview. We, one, briefly reviewed the draft charges for the CEC and the Communications Committee for 2016-17. Two, welcomed guest speaker Evelyn McCormick of Mac Digital Communications, who works with the Communications Committee. There is overlap between the charges of the CEC and the Communications Committee. So this was very interesting for us. Primmis McCormick, traditional news media outlets no longer have enough personnel to write or record the good news about our district. We're generating our own content and leveraging broadcast, online, and social media. Outlets include the district website, the Greenberg app, our cable channels, press releases to the journo's in White Plains Daily Voice, Facebook, YouTube, Twitter, and now Instagram. Generally, five short messages have more impact than one long message five times as long. Messages about current events should come as close to real time as possible. We're in the process of rebranding our district and upgrading our website, thanks to Rocco Verulio and the team working on the website, and creating a Realtor video. That was her report. Three, noted the small-city suit to increase state education aid for eight small cities was unsuccessful. So if we're looking for a way to increase our state aid to where it should be, litigation may not be the way to go. There's a precedent set against us. Four, reviewed the current New York State Foundation aid formula, the combined wealth ratio, and proposed changes in the state aid handbook. Thanks to Mary O'Neill for helping with this issue. We found that our wealth ratio is 2.5. The property reevaluation numbers quoted by the town of Greenberg won't help us, and the changes in the new handbook won't help us either. Our foundation aid is carryover from the pre-2008 aid system that was kinder to us. So some proposed reforms could actually hurt us. One proposed reform that might help is that the low-income statistics in the formula are still derived from the year 2000 census data, and newer data might help us. The Assistant Superintendent for Business has contacted the National Center for Educational Statistics regarding this issue. We've gotten a response. We're looking at it. On a more positive note, New York State Education Department and the Board of Regents supports state aid reform. Per Dr. Chase, Dr. Coles, the head of Southern Westchester Bodices, will lobby for state aid reform for us to the New York State Education Department. Stay tuned on that one. For more information on state aid, see the NYSED state aid website. That's HTTPSstateaid.nysed.gov, or just Google State Aid Report. Item five, we noted that the district vision, mission, and core beliefs have been posted to our website, and that the board will schedule another goals meeting in November. Item six, reviewed a list of GCSD events. I think we've covered most of them. Let's see. The 18th, this board meeting that we're at right now, the October 29th, the PTA Council Resource Fair, we've already heard about. If you're looking for health and wellness resources, special ed resources, or a fun Halloween event for the family, come to the Resource Fair. November 1st, Board of Education work session at 6:30 p.m. November 8th, Election Day, remember to vote. November 15th, another board meeting at 7:00 p.m. at Highview. And November 16th, the Superintendent's Dessert/CEC Outreach at 6:30 p.m. in the mansion. Item seven, noted the recent Woodlands Evening of Excellence event. Congratulations to approximately 60 Woodlands High School 10th, 11th, and 12th graders who maintained a 90% or higher GPA last year. Matt Smith is in the audience. Other concerns, we need to emphasize academics in our district publicity efforts. We need to address issues regarding online versus paper copy parent notification of events in our schools. We would like to see the latest data on public and private school enrollment. We should provide PBS and other additional training to our noon aides. We should ensure that keyboarding instruction time is scheduled in elementary grades. We would like an update on the state of the facilities and consolidation efforts. The next meeting of the Community Engagement Committee is 11:21:16 at 7:00 p.m. at RJ Bailey. All are welcome. There's a correction here. Has the Resource Fair been moved to the high school? Is that correct? Thank you. The next item, well, now we're going to run the agenda. We're using board docs here, so this is the technological method of doing this. All right, do I hear a motion? Let me look here. For personnel items E. 1 through 17.
So move.
Do I hear a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. We would like to recognize, oh, speak, speak, Dr. Chase.
Speak, right, Angel. Well, first, I would like to congratulate Ms. Veronica Enriquez. You just earned your tenure. Please stand up so the whole community can congratulate you. We welcome you to the Greenberg Central School District family. You've been a wonderful asset to our school district. The board learned all the wonderful things that you were doing. Mr. Smith speaks very highly of you. I know firsthand what a fantastic teacher you are, what a wonderful advocate you are for children. You give voice to those who are sometimes silent, the clubs that you've run, and your mentorship to our kids, and we just would like to say thank you. And tenure simply means that we appreciate your work. We look forward to that and then some in the years to come. So congratulations for a job well done, well earned.
The next set of items on our agenda are items F. 1 through 6. And for item 6, there's one slight change. I believe there are two bullets in the CEC charges that need to be combined. I believe we wanted to move the core belief to the second bullet and delete the second to the last bullet. So we're talking about district goals as opposed to board goals, but we have a complete list of the associated belief statements. All right. Do I hear a motion to pass items F. 1 through 6 as amended?
Second.
All in favor? Those opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Item G, finance. Do I hear a motion to approve finance items 1 through 6?
So move.
Do I hear a second? All in favor? Those opposed? Motion carries.
Motion carries. Do I hear a motion to approve Items 1 through 5?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Item I, Student Services. Do I hear a motion?
So moved. Second.
For Items 1 through 2, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. New Business. All right, there, under New Business, we have a resolution denying appeal, and that would be Item J1. Do I hear a motion to pass Item J1? Should I?
So moved.
Can you see it?
No.
All right, I'll read it out for you. One, Resolution to Deny Appeal. Be resolved that the Board of Education of Greenberg Central School District hereby denies the appeal of Tracy Mayor's regarding the September 27th, 2016 Freedom of Information Law request as set forth in the attached decision. It's a FOIL appeal. It's under New Business, so it was just added. Do you want me to read it again?
No.
Okay. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Nay.
Opposed.
Got two nays, and the motion carries.
One opposed.
Two opposed.
Two nays.
Myself and Antoinette. Thank you.
Other items of New Business? Antoinette, I believe you had something?
Yes, I wanted to see if the board could consider the possibility of trying to address a crisis that's growing in middle-class communities, particularly speaking of students who may not have enough food at home. There are students in various school buildings that I hear from, some administrators that they actually, sometimes a school meal is the meal. So I wanted to see if we consider, if we could consider taking some sort of action that may address that. I know there are other school communities that sometime have a pantry available in the schools that where they may have non-perishable items that are available that students, if they are in need, they can take some items, you know, home over the weekend or on a daily basis.
Is there another district that perhaps we could look at as a model?
I can say personally for myself, working for the New York City Department of Education, I know that there are schools that do it as well. I do some research about what schools in Westchester that does it.
Dr. Chase, could you research this item?
Yes.
And come back to us, say, November?
I will. And, Mr. President, if you don't mind, one of our local churches actually reached out to me last week to address that very issue, because they see it as a growing issue as well, and they would like to partner with our school district to identify 10 to 15 families that they can sponsor throughout the entire year in terms of adding some support to them, and that is Union Baptist Church. So they reached out to me last year, so I do want to share that. Thank you. We do, we do, we do have the food pantry in Westchester. So we will do some further research to see how these organizations can actually partner with our school district, and I'll give a report to the board.
Very good. All right, other new business? I seem to have one final announcement here. There's a high school blood drive this coming Thursday, October 20th, from 8:30 to 2:30 at the Free Low Center. Ideas required. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? We are adjourned.
Awesome.